Men on this board, I just pray that you give them great discernment to make the best possible choices they need to make as they guide this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, chaplain. Supervisor Quaidus, would you lead us in the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did anyone hear? Tony.
He is on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But he is on the floor.
Oh, okay. I didn't see you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Tanya, who's sitting in for annual this morning. Just want everybody to know she's Rich Chance, first off. First item I'd like to amend the agenda, get approval, one, consider sale of the IBL department and an order agreeing with the Public School District of Biloxi in reference to a 16-section public school sale, land sale. Oh, reese, I'm sorry, not sale. Do you hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye. I request the board to speak up because Tanya needs to hear, make sure she's not familiar with it. So each one will speak up so she can hear the vote. All right, that's all. That's an anonymous, everybody, so good. And Rebecca, are you on the phone?
Yes, good morning.
All right, good morning. Just want to say Supervisor Powers is on the telephone. All right, first item on the agenda is to recognize Renata Flot Patterson with Coastal Cabanas to discuss special events in 2025. Is she here?
Yes.
Yeah, come forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just take your name again and maybe your address and the record, please.
Yes, my name is Renata Flot Patterson. And my address, my home address?
Just whatever, there's a home.
1916 B-Side Drive, Biloxi, Mississippi, 39532.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So my reason for being here today is I've been having discussions with the Director of Sand Beach Authority, Troy, Trey McKnight, about beach events. There's a lot of restrictions in place that are pretty ancient in the guidelines and the, and you know, just all of the rules and regulations at the beach. So my goals are to, as a beach vendor, we, our primary business is beach cabanas, but we do host events. And we find that a lot of our beach revenue comes from hosting events, which people really love. It's just a thing these days. People are doing beach events across the globe and people really love doing it. I mean, beach dining events, beach weddings, beach, you know, birthday parties, bachelorette parties, you name it. So we offer and host, you know, as many as we can throughout the season when the weather is good. But the problem that we're having is that a lot of people are asking for, you know, certain things that events would need, such as catering and, you know, bar, to be able to bring bar service or through a licensed caterer, of course, and sometimes amplified music. So I know there's some restrictions at this point in time that are, you know, currently in place, which are no amplified music, no bar service, no catering service as far as being out there, having a caterer out there to serve food. So we're requesting that there be some flexibility in that so that we can host events. We're finding that a lot of our clients are going to go short because they do allow it, you know, and other places on the beach where people are just doing them on their own and not even getting permits. All we're asking is that a special events permit would be put in place where, for a specific date and time, that these things would be able to be allowed during a special event. That's it.
Any questions from the board? I would assume the board just taking on their advisor?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just FYI, Trey McKnight was going to a tennis tournament, his wife went into labor.
Oh, okay.
He better be there. No doubt. That's a, that's a pretty good excuse. Yeah.
All right, at this time, I'd like to recognize Frank Bordeaux at Cavens Insurance, present the upcoming insurance renewal, but I would assume a discount. That's not on the agenda. I didn't have it that long, personally.
I provided y'all a, is this on? Does anybody turn it on? Can Ms. Powers hear me?
She's here.
Okay.
You can hear Rebecca? Can you hear Frank, Rebecca?
Yes, very well, thank you.
Okay, so I've provided y'all a two-pager. We have the full proposal that I'll give to the administration and give each one of y'all a copy of it once it's completed. This year, unlike most years, we're still seeing a very, a softening market as far as property is concerned. So this is our worst-case scenario right now. We have a slight increase of about $5,000 for all lines of coverage. Your property, however, is down quite a bit. All of your increase is due to exposure. All of our exposures are up, whether it's employee count, number of drones, vehicles, our property has increased. And so this number's going to continue to come down. Y'all recall, after last renewal, we were able to get another $175,000 savings after the fact. I believe that this is going to continue. But in the course of doing this, we are negotiating with our property carriers to cancel on 4-1 so we can go into the pool. And so we're well oversubscribed on, on our panel. We have more capacity than what we needed, and that was intentional. If any of our carriers will not let, allow us to cancel flat on 4-1 if we go into the property pool, and it will be an additional savings to go into the property pool, not only a premium, but our coverages are going to go up quite a bit.
Did you say cancel on 4-1 or 4-2?
On 4-1. So the, the idea is for the pool to launch on 4-1, and we have the final documents that will be sent in to Mr. Holloman for his review. The insurance commissioners are viewing it, spoke to him last week. We had very good meetings in London. There's a ton of capacity that's being released to the pool that's never been on any of these accounts, just because, you know, we're going from just Harrison County to $2.6 billion in value of having the pool together. So all of a sudden, our panel just got really, really big. And we're seeing very good response out of that. So we're going to have a decrease on this, but we're also going to see a bigger decrease come 4-1, and we're going to see a lot better coverage come 4-1 as well. So, long and short, we're not going to pay any more than this. I'll continue to work with the administration, but what I'd like to do is to do a workshop with the full board after Mr. Holloman gets the final by-walls of the pool. And so I can go through all the details, how the pool structure is going to work for Harrison County, and then collectively, how it will work. But, long story short, the insurance market's going in our direction. It's softening, it's going to continue to soften, and I think we're really hitting the pool at the right time if we're able to do it on 4-1. And all indications are, we're going to have, we should have, probably 2-1 for the pool, and we'll be able to see what kind of savings. But collectively, with all entities, we're looking at about $3 million savings and much, much better coverage.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
For automobile insurance, which is $416,000 premium.
That's your all-lines aggregate. So that's your liability, that's your public officials liability, that's your law enforcement liability.
Right, I understand that, but how much, you know, you got, you got the toll claim actually. $500,000 deductible. We've never had an automobile claim that I know of that roots anywhere near $250,000. But I just wonder if that calculated in that premium.
100%.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and most of that's going to be your physical damage.
Yes.
Your, your liability, as you said, is pretty near. We do have coverage if we were to leave the state, but again, we've never had an issue as far as that's concerned.
I was curious, how much, I want to say?
The loss fund did go from 550 to 595. We're trying to negotiate that down. But three years ago, that was 650. So we were able to get from 650 to 550. They came back at 595. It's not a huge issue. We've never, we've hit the loss fund three times in the history of the county.
Fortunately.
Yeah, not cool with it.
Not cool with it. I was curious about the premium.
So I guess I will get with Mr. Collins on trying to schedule a date with the board to talk about the pool, if that's okay with y'all.
Yeah.
Frank, I'm just, I'm just curious here because I don't know, one, the bonds for the MOP agency.
Yes, sir.
Does that fluctuate up and down? Because it's showing 326 deputy sheriffs and 40 auxiliary, and of course, our numbers are never that high. So does that change, or is this the flat rate?
It changes all the time. Yeah, all of our bonds for the county changes nonstop.
Okay, all right.
It's, that's a pretty large task.
Right.
And we've tried to, we've tried to allow the state to just allow us to get a single bond in the state auditor's offices and that. That's how we were structured at one time, and each, each individual has to be bonded, yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No, sir.
Frank?
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Art concurring in a resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving a memorandum of understanding between the Harrison County Development Commission, Harrison County Board Supervisors, and Full Row Energy of Mississippi LLC attached into as Exhibit A, and requesting the Harrison County Board Supervisors concur in this resolution and join in the execution of the memorandum of understanding. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some guests with me that know a whole lot more about this than I do, so I'm going to turn it over to them.
All right, Chris, y'all would just identify yourself.
Yes, sir. My name is Chris Grissom. I'm a lawyer in Birmingham with Bradley. I'm here representing Next Air Energy, my client Tom Galliano. We're going to kind of talk the board through very briefly the proposed project and what we would like to have support on. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Hi, I'm Tom Galliano. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in front of you. I'm here representing Next Air Energy. We are one of the largest wind and solar developers in, in the world, and actually number one in North America. We're working on renewable natural gas projects. So now we're partnering with, in this instance, Waste Management at the Pecan Grove Landfill on fire tower mode. We are collecting the gas and cleaning it up and turning it into quality spec that can be used in vehicles and any type of heating for homes. Doing this project can provide enough energy and environmental benefits to save power for 15,000 homes annually. So overall, this, this will provide enough environmental benefits that it could impact the community as well as bring jobs and tax, tax benefits to the county, right? So Next Era, we're, we're investing a lot in Mississippi County. We're, if you see page five, this will be the seventh project we're developing in the state of Mississippi, and we're looking to invest over a billion dollars over the next few years in energy projects that can absolutely benefit the environmental community as well as economically as well. So this project, like I said, is in partnership with Waste Management. We collect the natural gas on-site through industrial, through industrial ways, and we take it and we use a lot of, a lot of custom machine equipment for it. And by allowing this project to work with the county, this, this project is, we, we really liked the project. It's not the most economically benefit, so having this partnership and we can work together on the statutory abatement will, will essentially guarantee us to bring this project here. And if you see on second to last page, you'll see that we plan on spending over $11 million for the 18 years of life of the project. This is just in property tax benefits for the county. This, this does not include any sales and use tax, any jobs that we bring, any income tax that we bring. So having this partnership, it's, it really will benefit the bottom line on this and allow us to build this project and have some benefits for the county.
Could you, Tom, is it, what is the relationship, if you can tell me, the financial relationship between you and your company and Waste Management?
So it's just a partnership, right? So we're, we, in this instance, there's a couple different ways it could be financially structured, but in this instance, we're paying them for the gas on the MNBT level. It's a, it's a volume-based level, right? So the more that they produce, the more that we can use, the more that we can sell. That gets directly passed forward through a revenue share. So it comes straight out of the top, top of the line, really. That goes straight to the Waste Management business in that area.
And the reason I asked that question, all, you know, we have to pay Waste Management for the disposition of our waste, and there are costs of that, so hopefully there's some benefit to Waste Management and their relation, which will also come back to us maybe in some savings in our disposition of the, of the waste that we put into the landfill.
And their trucks can sometimes use natural gas, so this is kind of a full circle.
Right.
Energy-wise.
That's saving.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, and what you're asking for in this MOU is, is a regular abatement, tax abatement, I think, for five years.
Yes, sir.
First five years at 100%?
Yes, sir.
100% abatement, so that you realize that's what they're asking for. Okay, any questions from the board? Not to Chair Lamontan, a motion to either approve or deny the request of the MOU.
Make the motion to approve.
Second, any further discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, there's no no. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank that, Ron. Our next chair will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Lady's honor, as well. Art acknowledged and receipt of an approving petition for decreases to the 2024 personal property role as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Art acknowledged and received of an approving petition for decreases to the 2023 personal property role as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion, second.
Discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. And county engineer, approving submittal of a budget modification request to DEQ to reallocate funds within approved offer projects to align with actual contract amounts and authorize the board president to sign the request form.
Motion, second.
Discussion? The only discussion I have, Jackie, I was looking over some of those, there seems to be a, a good difference in what was apparently proposed, what was proposed and what actually came in on the bids, especially the engineering. What, what was proposed and what actually came in?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean by on the engineering.
Well, there's some differences, apparently what you, what you're doing, you need to come that, that we didn't do. What I'm asking you is that the cost exceeded some of the proposals, the bids.
The bids, the construction bids, yeah.
Exceeded what was, what was estimated.
Yes, sir.
What was estimated.
Some, some exceeded considerably. Some, some were considerably higher and some were actually lower, and overall, they're balancing out. For instance, the one that we're, is on the agenda next to award is the water tank. They, you know, we did estimates based on what we thought it would be. There was, and I think it's based on this funding, actually. There were some 24, I think, water tanks all bidding this month around the countries that are all, every single contractor is very busy and able to bid higher or not do work. The drainage projects generally are coming in much lower because there's much less of that, but this flooding of the market with this money basically made a lot of the bids come in very high.
I just noticed some of it was some big increases that, that's what I expected.
And, and keep in mind, some of these were estimated based on absolutely no design at all. They were based on a, a picture on a map.
Was the engineering cost tied in as a percentage of the actual bid?
In most cases, they were based on the original estimate. If a scope changed, it would change with it, like if we needed to add a water line that wasn't initially in there, it would change.
I, I can understand that, that would be work, additional work, but if the estimate, the engineering cost was based on the estimate and scope, even though the bids came in higher, the scope of work was the same, why would the engineering cost go up?
I guess I'm not sure which ones would have done that.
Well, I'd have to, let's see, I, I don't want, we can, we can talk about it later, I'm curious, but I, I was just curious. Maybe I don't understand something. If you propose a project, you got an estimated cost. Based on that estimated cost, you have an engineering cost. That cost is tied in some, some way with the percentage, type of something.
There's perhaps not to exceed that amount, and if a scope changed up or down, then it, then it would?
I'm simply asking the question that if the bid comes in at a greater amount than what was estimated, why would the engineering cost go up as well if the project itself, if the scope of work remained the same?
I, I don't think that they should significantly. I mean, I think that some of them may have.
You saw that?
No, that's what you think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we need to look at that.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
Okay, no other, any other discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye.
No, never by aye.
Those opposed by no?
You said?
I've never got a motion.
I'll make a motion.
A motion, second. No other further discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto awarding Harper bids for SB Avenue Elevated Water Tank Project to the lowest and best bid of paintings, fabricators, and a egressors incorporated for a total amount of $5,272,800 to include the base bid and alternate one as recommended by the design engineer, Overstreet Associates, and the county engineer, Jack Turner, and authorize the board president to execute contract documents following legal review.
Motion, second.
Discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto approving execution and payment of pay application number 14 to Harrison County Bridge LLC for work on Manjave Avenue I-10 project and a courtist with the development agreement and the attached form of GO requisition, uh, requisition in the amount of $1,116,285 and 2 cents payable from 30910581.
Motion, second.
Discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. I apologize, Rebecca, I know that phone delayed.
No problem, thank you.
Emergency management agency, discuss capacities of hurricane shelters, hurricane shelters in the Harrison County, in Harrison County, recent population growth, community needs in eastern Harrison County, and opportunities for federal funding.
Motion, second.
Discuss.
Good morning. I, I know it's hard to think about hurricane shelters with Christmas decorations up, but we, we are already planning ahead for future hurricane seasons, even though we just finished one out at the end of November. And through our needs analysis, we, we have found that even if we activated every one of the 14 shelters that are currently on our roster, we would still not quite have capacity for the 10% of our population that we planned for in our hurricane plan. So there is a slight gap now, and that gap is expected to widen over the next few years. Harrison County is growing, population's growing, and there will be, in the future, some need for additional sheltering capacity. Speaking with our grant writer, Catherine Collins, we've identified a few potential opportunities for federal funding that would be very helpful in any additional construction. And of course, we're going to continue to coordinate with our, our school partners and other potential facilities that could be built, or could be brought into sheltering service that could be recent construction as well.
Yeah, that, rather than new facilities, reinforcing.
Yes, sir.
Present facilities to qualify for a shelter.
Looking at both, yes, sir. And so I just wanted to, to bring the matter before the board, let you know that we are doing the, the background research on that and see if there was any guidance from the, the board at this time regarding hurricane sheltering.
You seem to be, you said eastern Harrison County. You seem to be, have enough facilities in western Harrison County?
That's correct, sir. After Hurricane Katrina, there were several new shelters that were built in the county, and of course, a couple of the Harrison County schools that were new construction also were built to the shelter standards. But the vast majority of those new facilities were built center and west Harrison County. Just because of the floodplains, potential flood issues, there's less area available in the eastern part of the county, the southeast in particular. And so that would also need to be, part of the analysis is suitable locations as far as the infrastructure and to avoid potential making an island that could be inaccessible due to flooding.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've, I've been working with them semi on like a design and a location, if we were to go the route of the, the new facility and how we could get it funded. Also with that facility, we, we also kicked around making it, having a separate building, semi-attached for, make it pet, for pet-friendly sheltering. But I've been working with them for, for a while, trying to figure this out, to see how we can go about doing a new shelter, if possible, in either in Nathan's district or in one, for the east side of Harrison County.
A question, Matt. Would the grant restrict those facilities to be used only as a shelter, or can we use it for multi-purposes, for example, like a community center or whatever else the county might have some need for? Would the grant allow that? I know when we built the FEMA shelters, there were some issues about what, what we could use those facilities for.
We definitely would want the primary purpose of the facility to be sheltering for the population in an emergency, but alternate secondary uses is not deeming anything ineligible. Today, we, we do senior activities in some of the shelters built after Katrina, and there are other community events from time to time at the shelters, but that is not their primary purpose. The primary purpose is as an emergency shelter.
I understand that, but there, there would be no restrictions as far as the grant is concerned, that it'll use other uses of that facility.
We would check the, the grant language to be sure of that, yes, sir, Dr. Wacken.
Yeah, we do want, in, in the talks and the design, that we, more of an adored setting would be the building, but the whole, primary purpose would be for the safety. Second would be, we don't, we, we really don't want to be handcuffed, we want it to be available for basketball, indoor volleyball, for whatever use that the community wants. That's more or less what it's for. I don't know if being handcuffed is, is an option that we're looking for. We want the community to be able to use this building whenever they see that they need, they need to use it.
So if, if we identify a, a potential good opportunity, I would like to bring that before the board for consideration for an application for a grant or some other action for your recommendation.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Any, any questions or other?
Any questions? All right, well, thank you, Matt.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Part of proven blood center, blood drive hosted by Harrison County EMA and Harrison County 911 to be held on January 22nd, 2025, and training room at the Harrison County Multi-Department Complex at 12423 Seaway Road.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto authorizing the submittal of an application to FEMA fiscal year 2024 assistance to firefighter grant program for the acquisition of a pumper tender truck and authorize the board president to execute necessary documents.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Mr. Zoning Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Zoning recommends concurring with complaining commissioner recommendations for cases 20 through 25.
Motion, second. A second.
Discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Art concurr with county administrator on employment as listed and on files payroll clerk and HR department.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto approving the purchase of labor, material, and installation of glass store front wall for the tax assessors office and goport for the highest quote of Glass Solutions Incorporated, amount of $7, $300 payable from 001121581. This quote is. This quote is best, is the best value and product for Harrison County's needs as noted in exceptions application.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, there's no problem with that?
Language should be that it's the lowest and best quote we've noticed to have because of the reasons they gave. I think it's fine if, as far as reasons.
As long as it's best.
Well, the lowest and best quote in the places for it is that the, they installed somewhere petition in another office that will be the same as opposed to a different.
I think the reason they want it to be the same is that that, that tax collector's office, why wouldn't that included in the quote? Was that included in the quote? Does anybody know?
So, Doc, what is your question?
The, the reason why we're going with the highest one, because best, because it matches the construction that we did at the tax collector's office.
That is correct.
And I'm just curious, if, did we put that in the quote, that's what we want, the same thing that we got at the tax collector's office?
We did two different companies, two different dissimilar type metals and not the same color.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to provide that?
That is correct, they could not provide the same materials that the tax collector did.
Comfortable with that.
We wanted it to match.
Was it also the timing issue?
The timing issue, yeah, so that, that's justification. Thank y'all.
I think that qualifies as lowest and best, even though it's not the lowest.
Good.
What?
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Hard acknowledge and receipt of the only bid received for installation of cruise cushion ride footing at Fairgrounds Arena from Showtime Jump Company LLC in the amount of $106,458.61 and reject said, excuse me, reject, said bid with no re-advertising as recommended by the county administrator and fairgrounds director.
Motion.
Motion.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Let's recognize the sheriff as he represents.
I'm sorry, Ma, let me excuse me. Greg Whitfield is there. We have an issue with the timing on this, we've got to get this moving forward or the winter classes will have to be canceled. So I'd like Greg to come up and get to the, the options that we, I would like to hear from Greg, is he in the room?
Yeah, okay, Greg.
We have two quotes to get the cushion ride installed. The lowest quote is 74,000 to get it done. I also have a second quote if, if need be, but this is an entity where it's a specialized material that needs to be installed by a professional, but our lowest quote is 74,000.
I share some of the bid requirement.
Yes, sir.
The bid requirement is 74,000.
Yes. And the road department is taking care of the subsurface in the base, but this is just for the quarter mod, sand, and cruise cushion footing for the top, that's it.
You need to get that second quote.
Yes, sir, I can get a second quote.
I'm curious, it's not the same company that bid, was it?
Uh, well, this is, yes.
They did a hundred and six, but now they're giving a quote of 74.
Well, that's because the 106,000 also covered the subsurface and the.
So you changed.
Yes, so he's no longer doing the subsurface in the base.
So you took that.
We're going to do the subsurface in the base, the county is going to do that.
You reduced the scope of the project, which brought it down below.
Correct.
Correct.
But we, we got, just, you want to get that second quote?
Yeah, we got your second quote.
If it's possible.
I have one.
By Wednesday, that's our last meeting.
Yes, sir, I have one. I can turn it into Mr. Collins by the end of day.
Okay.
That would go on the agenda.
For Wednesday.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, good, any other questions, Rebecca? Got anything else?
No, that's fine, if we can get it by Wednesday and get it on the agenda to pass, it's got to get done, thank you very much.
All right, I think we really don't have to. All right, now we're going to recognize the sheriff again.
For real this time. Total inmate counts eight sixty-five, 212 state inmates, 20 are ready to go, 83 misdemeanors, seven federal, 16 juveniles at the adult detention center, 11 at juvenile detention, 10 of those are all born in this Hancock County.
Eight sixty-five jumped up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, we, I almost had a heart attack this morning when I seen that.
Yes, sir.
I think we had an influx of misdemeanors over the weekend, so we're in the process of changing that right now.
Christian decorations.
Right, yeah.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
County administrator, auto-authorizing disposal of assets per attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-approving monetary reimbursement for in-county travel for the listed employees.
Motion second.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-authorizing reimbursement to the road fund, 15000360 for the details of listing.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-authorizing reimbursement to the sheriff's office account number 001200I42 for the details listed.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-approving claims list to be paid to, to the TARD account.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-approving travel as listed.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-authorizing line item transfer in the amount of $4,200 from 00152780 to 00152921 for the purchase of Wool Market Ball Field, for the purchase of a ice machine for the Wool Market Ball Field.
Motion second.
Any, any discussion, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-approving claims, per Mississippa Code 1972, annotated section 191327.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-approving payment of claims as listed.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you, aye.
All, any opposed, motion here. Auto-authorizing issuance of duplicate warrant in the amount of $7,765, Greg Butler, for certificate affidavit on file with the chancellor.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no, motion here. Auto-approving modification number nine to contact to obtain services from Mississippi State University for Title III project, Mr. Fire Education Program for fiscal year 21, fiscal year 23 funding, and authorize an execution thereof.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-adjudicating the employment of A. Norris Hopkins Jr. and Hopkins, Bart V., and Hopkins to represent the Harrison County Sheriff's Department and Deputy Dakota Brooks in litigation matter of style, Patel versus Brooks.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-authorizing approving, auto-authorizing and approving the striping of certain streets within the city of Gupford as per terms of interlocal government cooperation agreement between the city of Gupford and Harrison County.
Motion second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-adjudicating and spreading bone amendments to executed engagement letter with Municipal Advisors of Mississippi Incorporated for municipal advisory services authorized in the resolution adopted in November 4th, 2024, filed number 24-4544 relating to the Bridgewater Bay Projects.
Motion second.
Discussion, here none, all.
One more question, those will be paid out of the bond purchase.
Correct.
So why does that count?
No cost to the county, it was out of bond.
Yeah, they come in. And that's, that's the 350,000. Thank you. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Auto-adjudicating and authorizing its fundataries as listed as necessary to advertise and bring into favorable notice the opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including all forms of advertising, including but not limited to broadcast advertising, logo recognition on publicity collateral, other media, and all broadcast, printed material and signage along with the link displayed on Harrison County online. I will ask that we take items A and B separately, so the chair will ask for a motion in reference to A.
Motion second.
Discussion.
Yes, one thing on, on A is this is a local game, this is some of the best high school football players in the state, and it looks like the game that we played in Hattiesburg, but it actually played here, the state of Gupford.
Okay, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, no, motion here. Item B, are you in motion?
Motion second.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. That's open to the public.
Yes, sir. Is this passing?
All right, sheriff, you got anything?
I do not.
Oh, wait a minute, we got agenda items, I'm sorry. First agenda item to consider, order finding that the property located at 10274 Third Avenue, the Applefield, Mississippi 39540, is no longer needed for the county purposes or related purposes and is not to be used in the operation of the county, that the sale of the property in the manner otherwise provided by law is not necessary or desirable for the financial welfare of the county, and that the use of the county property for the purpose for which it is to be sold, conveyed or leased will promote and foster the development and improvement of the community in which it is located in the civic, social, educational, cultural, moral, economic, or industrial welfare thereof, and authorizing the sale to, excuse, do not tongue on wind pursuant to the authority granted by Mississippi Code annotated 19-7-3, and authorizing the execution thereof necessary complete to sell.
Motion second.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here. Let the record reflect, Mr. Supervisor of the nation has to lead. All in favor, did I get? Auto-authorizing the board president to execute the residential lease for 16 section public school trust land by and between Biloxi School District and Lorik McNeil.
Motion second.
Any discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by, by no, motion here. All right, sheriff?
I think I have anything.
Thank you, Collins?
No.
Supervisor Jones, supervisor Linder has nothing, supervisor Quaid?
No, sir, I do not, thank you.
Does the chancellor have anything?
The one thing I want to note is the school board, school district attorney sent me a copy of the resolution by the school district approving.
Approving, approving the 16 section. Our function is going ministerial anyway, we don't.
The term whether or not it's fair market land, that's it, but it is. I just want to make sure you knew it was a resolution.
Right, from then, yeah, generally, yeah, I'd say we just, we just have ministerial function. All right, Jim, that's all.
That's all.
That's it. So sheriff, any other motion to the sheriff?
Motion.
Discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion here, thank you. I said.
I got one more on this side.